Good afternoon. Mr. Clerk, I would like to call this meeting of the Providence City Council Hall to order where we're going to talk about a specific topic related to education. Can you please call the roll?
Council President Matos.
Present.
Councilwoman Anthony is absent. Councilwoman Castillo.
Present.
Councilwoman Correa.
Present.
Councilman Espinal.
Present.
Councilman Gunkals.
Present.
Councilwoman Harris is absent. Councilwoman Iglesias is absent. Councilor Kirwin.
Present.
Councilwoman LaFortune is absent. Councilor Miller.
Present.
Councilman Narducci is absent. Councilwoman Ryan. Councilman Salvatore is absent. Councilman Taylor.
Here.
You have nine present and five absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you please read the item number one into the record?
I'm going to hand that off to Mr.
Mr. Clerk, could you please read the item to the record?
Sure.
So in the meantime, I just want to remind everyone that we're having this meeting in this format of the Providence City Council Hall just to make sure that we are not violating any open meetings law. I wanted to have this conversation. I had a meeting with Neil Steinberg from the Rhode Island Foundation before and about the topic of education and the work that the foundation is doing. I knew that this is work that many of my colleagues in the city council are passionate about it and would like to participate in the conversation. Instead of scheduling a meeting and not knowing how many council members were going to show up and trying to avoid any violation of open meeting laws, instead we're having the meeting in this format. As you know, I'm using this format as a way to get information to the council members and also for us to, the council members and the staff, to learn and have new knowledge about the work that we do. So with that, Mr. Clerk, are you ready?
And also, I don't know, Council President, if you wanted to have the solicitor speak in, we have Gillian Fain with us.
Oh, yes, please, thank you. The solicitor, can you please state on the record that the legality of this meeting being done be assumed? Can you please put that on the record for us? I think the solicitor is muted.
Yeah, I believe that that's what why Gillian joined, but I'm not sure if she might just be observing. Can you hear us?
Oh, I'm just here to observe.
You're just here to observe.
Are you here to observe?
I guess we don't have a. All right, would you like me to read the?
Could you read the disclaimer, please? Mr. Clerk, can you do both? The disclaimer and read the item in the record?
Which, you mean the disclaimer that the?
The legality of the meeting based on that.
Okay, yes, I mean, this, this meeting is being held pursuant to the Rhode Island, the Governor Raimondo's executive order that allows meetings to be held remotely during this pandemic, and we're continuing under the direction of that exception to the open meetings laws at this time.
Thank you. Could you read the item into the record, please?
Yes. Item one, presentation given by Neil Steinberg, president and CEO of the Rhode Island Foundation with a report commissioned by him, chart a course, stay the course, Rhode Island's path to a world-class education system.
Thank you. With that, I would like to welcome Neil, and I just want to say thank you so much for agreeing to have this conversation with us. The meeting that we had, I saw the passion that you have for this work, and I know that there are other council members that also have the same passion. So please tell us about the report and what you guys are doing.
Sir, thank you, President. It's great. Thank you for inviting me here. I know that you're all committed to education. I don't think there's very many people these days that don't believe that that is the most important thing that we could do, whether it's in Providence or the state, is to provide the best education for all of our students. Couldn't be more important than it is now coming out of COVID-19, or hopefully coming out of COVID-19, looking at inequities, looking at achievement gaps, looking at disparities, all the things that have been barriers to us moving this along. So I'm going to go through, I think we provided you all with a hard copy at some point earlier of the report. I'm not technologically adept enough to show you the screens, plus I think it's boring. So I'm going to go through this, and then we can talk about any questions or comments or advice or whatever that you have. So I'm going to go back a little. The Rhode Island Foundation, hopefully most of you know who we are. We're the largest funder to the nonprofit organizations in the state. We're a 104-year-old community foundation. We're the state's community foundation. We've got a billion-dollar endowment. We raise money. We give out a lot of money, and our top initiatives are K through 12, or pre-K through 12 education, health and healthcare, and healthy lives, and economic security. But we also support the arts and the environment and housing and everything else. So education's always been near the top or at the top for us, but about, oh, a year and a half ago, so in the fall of 2018, as we were looking more and more at education, and we just took a real deep dive look at Massachusetts. Now, you know Massachusetts has arguably the best public education in the United States. And I say arguably because, yeah, it's based on test scores, it's based on a lot of other things, but it is at the top. And it is clear that whether it's Massachusetts or it's Boston, they still have achievement gaps. There's no doubt about that. It's just their achievement gaps are at a higher level. So there's still a gap, but they're up here and we're still down there. I got tired candidly of hearing that we had the largest Latino achievement gap in the United States for five or six years and not doing anything about it. So I got a chance to meet an individual, David Driscoll, who was the Commissioner of Education in Massachusetts in 1993. And 1993 is pointed to in Massachusetts at the time when they set about to make major change in education. And that's when they started, and it took them 25 years. So what we learned, the big difference, the kids are not smarter in Massachusetts, the teachers are not better in Massachusetts, the leadership is not radically different. But they set up course, they made a plan, and they stayed with that plan through different governors, through different speakers, through different Senate presidents, through different commissioners. They stayed with the plan from 1993 forward. That is the secret sauce in Massachusetts. Now, there's a lot of things they learned and a lot of things they did that we're learning from, but that really is the key to stay the course. So we set upon the goal of coming up with a lot of people, leading and convening, a long-term planning effort for education in Rhode Island. As an aside, we did the same thing in health and healthcare because there were no long-term plans. We historically, and you know, I am fairly candid, we did flavor of the moment. So a new commissioner, new superintendent, new governor came in, and we do flavor of the moment. One of the biggest complaints that the unions had candidly is teachers would learn how to do something, and then there was new math, and then there was this, and then there was that. There's a lot of basics. One of the things that I've come out of this with, and it may sound like a wise guy comment, but it really is sincere, that I would like to start a charter school called Read and Write and Arithmetic, and just make sure every child that gets out of there can read, can write, and do arithmetic, and we'd be way, way ahead of the game. Not that it's that simple. So anyway, we said we're going to lead this, and we convened the group. We went to the governor, to the Speaker, Senate President, said, this is what we're going to do. We did not have elected officials on the committee on purpose, and the purpose was we wanted to be able to present the results to elected officials at the state level. But what we did do was we had a robust representation that included the Chair of the Council on Elementary and Secondary Education, included the Chair, included the Commissioner at the time, and we started this with Ken Wagner before Commissioner Fonte Green came. And we had senior level of the two union heads, if you saw the plan, it's in the back of the plan, we had business executives. I'll give you an example. We had Executive Vice President from Hasbro. The CEO of Hasbro, Brian Goldner, will say publicly frequently that half of their employees in Pawtucket live in Massachusetts because of the education. If we want to have a workforce, if we want to have an educated group of voters, if we want to attract companies here, we need the best education. I don't think anybody argues that. So we had the Executive Director of the Association of Principals, and we had the deans, the education schools from Rick and Annenberg Brown and URI. Again, business, we had RPEC, the Greater Providence Chamber, the two unions, I said, Association of School Committees and the superintendents. We had representation from the charter schools, Elizabeth Burke Bryant from Kids Count. So we had a full range of a committee that met monthly starting the end of 2018. And our goal was a 10-year vision and plan for education in Rhode Island. We had two major ground rules when we had these meetings. When people walked in the door, we asked them to leave their stripes at the door. So it wasn't all about whatever group they represented. We also had student groups represented, too. The other ground rule was look and think long term. We know the immediate challenges that you all deal with right in front of you at the schools, including the horrendous time we're in now of how to even open them up. But what we needed to do was look down the road. This came at the same time when we moved as a state to the RPEC tests that were direct copies of Massachusetts. And you know how we did. If Rhode Island had been a district in Massachusetts, it would have been in the top, I mean, the bottom, sorry, bottom 10% of all the districts in Massachusetts. And I don't pick on Providence, and I don't pick on Central Falls, and I don't pick on One Sockit. I pick on East Greenwich and Barrington, and their results don't hold a candle to Wellesley, Massachusetts, and other wealthy suburban areas of Massachusetts. So it's a whole state issue. Now, the good news is when Massachusetts, 20-plus years ago, first took their equivalent of these tests, they didn't do a whole lot better than we did in our first year. So it's not like, again, everything's better there. It grew to be better there. They committed it. They committed to it, and so we set upon to do that. So you have to think 10-year strategic plan. I got a lot of objections when we first started, and they were focused, and I've been around a long, long time in this state. I've got copies of the Greenhouse Compact in my office. What I heard was, oh, yeah, just what we need, another 150-page shelf document that sits on everybody's shelf and nothing gets done. So we were committed not to doing that, and hopefully you will hear how we stayed away from that. Nothing else. The plan that you saw, the report, is only 21 pages, so we stayed away from 150 pages. And we are moving forward on an action basis. So we said we wanted to create something that could last, it was unified, it had an equity component, and that it was aspirational. That's very, very important. This is our moonshot. This is our Olympic moment. I truly believe that for education in the state of Rhode Island, this is a moment in time that we need to, with all vigor, with all support, move on. Why do I think that? We passed a bond as a state for school renovations. And I have to say, everything, you know, has an asterisk with the unfortunate challenge we've all had with the pandemic, on things being delayed. But we had legislation that was passed, we helped push for it, that copied Massachusetts for site-based management of the schools and curriculum reform. We had a new commissioner come in. We have attention that you well know to our great capital city in addressing what is not and has not been done for years for our students in our largest city. There's no blame here, there's no attribution. It just is, and we need to pick it all up. We need to pick up the whole state. So we thought that there was this opportunity, we got this group together, and as I said, we met. We had a great facilitator, somebody by the name of Mary Beth Fafford. Some of you may know her, longtime Ride executive. But prior to that, she worked in Massachusetts for David Driscoll. She actually is the person that many years ago came up with the term MCAS for their, for their test. So she was very grounded in that. So we set about having these meetings, and we said, let's look down the road. What do we want to do? And we determined that we wanted to achieve a world-class education for all of our students in 10 years. And again, the pushback, walk down the street, what the heck does that mean? What is world-class education? And there are actually nine building blocks for a world-class state education system that we have and that we use to develop these that Mary Beth talked about. So over this period of time, we put together this vision, Rhode Island's world-class public education system prepares all students to succeed in life and contribute productively to the community. The most important word in that statement is the word "all," whether we underline it, put it in caps, or bold it. We want this opportunity for all of our students to equitably and urgently deliver on this vision. I'm going to walk through the vision, I'm going to walk through the strategies. Once we prepared this, we had an event, I don't know if any of you were there. It was in December of 2019, the end of last year, called Make It Happen: A World-Class Public Education for Rhode Island. We had 325 people at the convention center for the whole day, representing students, parents, educators, business community leaders, other stakeholders that were there. We had the governor, we had the Senate President, Speaker was not available, we had the Chair of the Education Committee for the House, and presented. We took this on the road afterwards, and we presented to all of those different groups of, whether it was superintendents, whether it was school committees. And importantly, one of the driving forces in Massachusetts was the business community. I was part of the business community. I was president of Fleet Bank. I was in the banking community for 25 years, up until 15 years ago. I'm embarrassed to say we do not have as much commitment from the business community as we need. So we took this to RPEC, we took it to the Chamber, we took it to the Robinson Foundation, we took it to the Manufacturers' Association, Society CPAs, anybody that would have us come, we would present to. And in writing, we have their endorsement. In writing, all the people that I named, from the different organizations that worked on this, we had them sign onto this document. So there's no such thing as the union folks saying, you know, ah, we worked on that, but we didn't buy into it. They bought into it. We did not agree on 100%. The other goal that we set out is to get 80% agreement. You cannot get 100% agreement on anything in this country, unfortunately. 80% was our goal, and that's what we achieved. We wanted people to come together for what's best for our students. So we want to equitably and urgently deliver on this vision, to put students at the center, to respect, enable, and empower our teachers, to serve students who have been left behind, and close achievement and opportunity gaps, to deliver relevant learning to students, to prepare them for the future economy, to engage families in actively shaping the experience for the students, to leverage community partners and the support of all Rhode Islanders. Everywhere that we go, we want all Rhode Islanders to be committed to having the best education that we can have. Hold adults accountable for student learning, provide the resources and distribute them equitably. I know, you know a lot better than I, what's embedded in that statement of having sufficient resources and distributing them equitably. Align policies and structures and support that work best for the students and teachers, and again, set ambitious statewide standards and high expectations, and stay the course. We now have the governor, the Speaker, the Senate President, all talking about staying the course. We rolled this out and had a meeting with a group of parents, and a parent came up to me and said, we can't have world-class education for her students. And I said, why not? She said, we just can't. And I said, what do you want to have? And she said, adequate. And I wanted to cry. Massachusetts benchmarks their results against Singapore and Hong Kong. We benchmark our state against Louisiana and Alabama. If that is what we want to do, then we can keep doing it. If we want to raise the bar, I would say very strongly that over the next 10 years, if we can achieve world-class education, if we can pull it up, if we can have one of the best education outcomes and systems in the United States, if we can provide the best healthcare and have the healthiest state in the country, we will not have to pay companies the millions of dollars of ransom to move their businesses here. They will come here. People want to live here. So again, very high-level strategic plan and vision. That is the vision. So what are the priorities in here? What are the strategies? So the first is high standards, to create and build a world-class pre-K to 12 educational system that is rigorous. We owe that to our students. They can do this work. We have to start early. We have to prepare them. We have to commit to them. We have to provide the resources. We have to have statewide standards for multilingual education. We were very fortunate to have Commissioner Fonte Green come. She jumped into this. She could have said, you know, this started before I came, you're on your own. She participated and helped lead this. We have next steps, and I'm not going to bore you and read all of these. They're actually in the report that we gave you on next steps that we need to do, and I'll talk about that at the end. The next one was educator support. Invest in recruitment, preparation, and continuous professional development of a diverse network of excellent educators. We use educators because it's broader than just the teachers, it's support professionals, it's the school leaders. We need to recruit. We need to improve preparation, professional development. We need to provide a safe harbor for emotional learning, for diverse learning, language barriers, other barriers that are in there, and we need to deal with that. The next one was investment priorities. Commit to meaningful and sustained investments in public education. Most of you, I'm sure, know, it wasn't that long ago that Rhode Island did not have a funding formula. We were the last state in the United States to have a funding formula. It was within the last 10 years, because I know it was within the time I was here at the Rhode Island Foundation. Before that, the legislature just kind of doled out the money. So we put in place one that was good. It wasn't excellent, but it was good, and it was better than what we had before. It is time to relook at that. It is time to look at the equity and the preparation and the dollars. Again, tragic that we have this pandemic and the economic background that we do, but as we look forward, we need to do that. So we need to look at the funding formula and priorities. Link investments to academic and economic and professional development outcomes. Leverage partnerships with that business community and with social service organizations. And meaningful, meaningful family and community engagement. I went to every single one of the Providence community sessions after the Hopkins Report came out and listened. I just listened, and I know many of you went, and you just wanted to cry at each one. We need to do this better in every city and town. And then the next one was clear governance. Okay? So the example that I talked about legislation, in Massachusetts, the school board appoints the superintendent, the superintendent appoints the principals, and the principals hire the teachers. Pretty straightforward. As you know, that is not what we had before. There are cities and towns where the superintendent hires the assistant volleyball coach, who happens to be my cousin. It's just not good practice. We need the site-based management. Legislation was passed to enable that. I know it hasn't been fully integrated into the schools yet, but very, very important. The governance, we need clear roles and clear accountability at each level. We need to engage, again, the community, parents, and students to be part of that decision-making process. But with that freedom and with that responsibility comes accountability, and we need to do that. So again, I don't want to just read to you, there are next steps under each one of those priorities that you can look at, that we have. And so what's the next step? So to address that, it's not going to be a shelf document, nobody's ever going to hear about it again. Two things happened. One is the commissioner is now leading an effort with the Rhode Island Department of Education for a new five-year plan for Ride, strategic plan. This report, these findings, these conclusions are going to be the basis for that, so it will live on. This committee continues to meet and will continue to evolve, and we will keep it going. And the Rhode Island Foundation, and we did it at the end of last year, committed $1 million above and beyond our regular grant making to this long-term initiative and another $1 million to the health initiative. Interestingly, I kept referencing the health initiative, and that's to be the healthiest state and get rid of the disparities. It's the same underlying issues. If children do not have a place to live, if they do not have food, if their parents do not have a job, they will not be healthy and they will not be able to learn adequately. People who do better in school are healthier, and if you're healthier, you have a better chance at doing well in school. There's a lot of overlap here in what needs to be done. We understand that. It's not as simple, and I will put this on the table, several people have thrown this at me, we've got to cure poverty. Now, that's like curing the common cold or world peace. I get it. I see it every day. It's a big part of our work. We have to get at the underlying reasons and root causes of poverty. Actually, education is the ticket out of poverty. For too many people, their zip code is their destiny. We need to change that. We can change it. We owe it to every student. Every student in the schools has the ability to learn, different levels, different speeds, different barriers, but they have the ability. It is our responsibility, everybody in the state, every leader in the state at all levels. Now, this is designed to be a 10-year plan. We're going to have a different governor, different speaker, different mayor, we're going to have different everything. That's the purpose of this. We need to be able to all collectively insist on staying that course so that when somebody comes in and they want to change the tests, or they want to change the graduation requirements, or they want to change just to change. Again, I go to flavors of the moment. I remember the announcement for computers in every classroom, very popular thing to say, gets headlines and everything, but you know, if the kids can't read, the computer in the classroom doesn't do them any good. If they're going to be playing games on the computers, it doesn't do them any good. We need to get back to the basics. We need to lead collectively. We will do our part on funding, we will do our part on keeping this group together and their successors, but we need to commit, and that's why we said, charting this course and staying the course. It's the song we're going to keep singing. It is what the, so what came out of this is the House endorsed both of these long-term plans. The Senate is doing it, I think, as we speak. It's in their consent agenda because we presented to them. And the Council on Elementary and Secondary Education about a month ago formally endorsed this long-term plan as the long-term plan for education for the state. So I will get off my soapbox and my soliloquy. You are right, Madam President, we're very passionate about this. I think it's the most important thing we can do for our children. I applaud all that you all are doing. I know it's challenging. I know it's challenging with the structure of the schools right now, but no matter how they're run, no matter who is there, we need to hold the high standards and stay the course. So I am glad to answer any questions, or you can't throw tomatoes through Zoom, I don't, but.
Now, thank you so much, Neil, for that presentation. And before we continue, I'd just like to acknowledge that Councilwoman LaFortune joined the meeting, Mr. Clerk, please make a note of that. I just want to open the opportunity for the council members, if anyone would like to ask any question or comment about Neil's presentation, feel free to use the raise-hand option. I'm trying my best to keep tabs of that, or either wait, you can wait also. So if anybody has any pressing questions? All right, I do have questions. All right, I do have questions. So Neil, thank you so much. And I was looking at the report. I was highlighting a few things in the report as I was looking at it. One of the... So there's something I was looking at, the next step, page 16, the clear governance. So I had a little bit of a laugh because you said one of the things, including new communications methods such as teleconference. Guys made it. I think that one, we can check that one off, right?
Yeah, we were ahead of our time, I guess. Geez.
Yeah, we can check that one off. But I actually wanted to hear from you. The situation that we are right now in the Providence with Providence School Department, as we all know, right now, they stayed to cover the school department. Based on this study and the recommendation that you have, what do you think is the best role that we can play, that the city council can play on this to make this a success?
Yeah, so I don't pretend to know everything that needs to be done, although I read the Hopkins report three times. The first time I cried. The second time I was sad. And the third time, I felt guilty because we were all around while this was going on. And I include myself in the business community here. But I think the most important things are the standards. You know, don't settle. You know, no matter what we think the state of education is in Providence or what the challenges are or what has to be improved, is to shoot for the moon. We owe these kids a world-class, top-notch education. And I think high standards and all the supports that are needed to go with that, whether it's professional development, whether it's different ways for student learning, and to stick with it. It's not as simple as, you know, we very much embrace learn by, to read at grade level by third grade. But it's been proven. If you have crappy middle school and high school experiences, young did what you did in third grade. So all along the way, the quality, the high standards, and believing in our kids in Providence and Barrington that they can do it. You know, the racism that has to be dealt with, we're going to be dealing with that going forward in this group. You know that. There are black and brown kids that are not getting the opportunity to be in advanced placement courses because some teacher just made an arbitrary decision that they can't do it. Wrong. We have to get by these things. We have to address them and deal with them. We need more teachers recruited that look like the kids. We need cultural competency, all these things that I know people know. But I would say, to me, the most important things are high standards and all the supports that go with that, and then sticking with it and sticking with it and sticking with it.
Thank you. We have a question from Councilwoman LaFortune. Councilwoman LaFortune?
Thank you, I'm Council President. Neil, thank you for your presentation. And I think we're all in agreement about really changing the whole structure of education within our state and not just giving our students an adequate education, but education. One of the things that Boston have is the Boston Teacher Residency Program. And Linda Darwin Hammond of the Learning Institute has talked about how, you know, there are teachers who are not adequately trained to teach. And a lot of these residency programs, including Boston, they found that over 45% of those teachers are teachers of color. In addition to that, those teachers who go through the residency programs after three years of teaching, they're more effective in their teaching and they stay in the teaching profession longer. So is that... And I've talked to Susannah Loeb about the teacher residency program. So I don't know if that's something that your group as a whole has talked about and have considered looking at funding sources to support some sort of Rhode Island teacher residency program to produce, to create an opportunity, one, to recruit teachers and also to develop our own.
Yeah, no, I mean, I've heard of the program. It's not something we specifically, Suzanne is on our group. We're going to look at what some of the next steps are, and that could be one of them. You know, we've... I've talked with Carlin Howard from Edge of Leaders of Color is on the committee. And one of the things you said piqued my interest because we've heard that retaining the teachers is as much, if not more, of a problem than recruiting. And so getting good teachers of color who are here and they stay for a couple of years and then they go somewhere else, you know, it's great while they were here, but it does not help over the long term. So we'll look into that.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilwoman LaFortune, any follow-up?
No, I may have later on, but not right now. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Espinal is next. Councilwoman Espinal?
Thank you, Madam President. Welcome, Neil. Thank you so much for such an eloquent presentation and for partaking in such a critical steps that need to be taken towards our education. I think we all agree that the socioeconomic factors and issues such as stable home, jobs, food on the table, those are some factors that you find, especially in Providence because we have a large poor community. But those are factors that are going to be there beyond 10 years. Your plan is 10 years. But these are not going to go away. So how much of an impact is this going to have? As you acknowledged that these are critical factors that are going to play a role in this.
Yeah, well, hopefully, they may not go away. But boy, if we don't make a dent in them, then I'm going to pack it up. There's no reason we can't attack some of those things that are there. So I'll just relate something that I've heard. And this may not be the answer, but it's an answer. There's an outstanding educator by the name of Jeffrey Canada. Jeffrey Canada started and runs the Harlem Children's Zone in New York. And he's had tremendous result in New York City, in Harlem, with educating kids. And I heard him say, he was in Providence several years ago. I don't remember what the event was that he spoke. And he said that it was their job to provide the best education they could to every student that walked in, no matter what their situation was. Now, I'm not saying the situation doesn't make it harder. So it's harder for one kid or another. But we can't use the excuse, and I'm not saying you were suggesting that. I'm just saying, in the short term, we got to get these kids a good education. And it may not be buying them a house and it may not be supplying everything else, although the teachers do make up for a lot of different things. But we've just got to double down on it. And if it's to help the parents learn English, if it's to help the parents... I know that one of the challenges with the distance learning is a lot of parents can't help their kids. They just couldn't help them with that. Either there was a language barrier or, you know, they weren't as skilled in certain areas in math. And that's not just a Providence issue. That's everywhere. But I don't think, you know, while we're not going to cure housing and all the other social ills, we better make progress. And we're going to be right back where we are. You know, the sad thing is, and I'll try and stay clear of politics, but right now in this state, we knew we were going to have another recession. Okay, I'm an old banker. Nobody knew it was going to be a pandemic. But we knew it was going to be a recession. We just didn't know when. Where did we lose jobs? We lost jobs in tourism. We lost jobs in hospitality. Now gambling, lower-wage retail. Where were we in 2008? Same exact profile. So if we don't put that stake in the ground now, get these kids educated, help them get a better job, do whatever wraparound services we can with the family and the parents, we're going to be back there in 10 years and saying the same thing. I'm too old to do this again in 10 years, Councilman. I'm going to push like hell now. But I understand. You know, it was one of the risks. I joke about it. But, you know, if you let it overwhelm you, it looks like we're trying to solve the common cold and world peace. And you can't do that. We've got to break it down. So not a perfect answer. I just that it feels very important to me that we got to keep trying to do it.
Thank you, Neil. And on that note, in regards to the business, the impact the pandemic has had on the business has been pretty traumatic. So my question is, is the business community still engaged and still part of this plan? Has this had an impact on it?
Yeah. You know, I'll let you know. We're going to have our first meeting since the pandemic next week. I don't think so because when we look at the jobs of the future, we need more skilled labor. And the only way we're going to get more skilled labor, to me, is through education. So I think that's still going to be the ticket out. Whole other issue on a large unemployment base. I know I've been involved in some meetings with the Governor of Commerce and DLT on reskilling efforts and things that are going to need to be done. But I'd say overall, yes. Business tends to look a little longer term than politics does because they don't have term limits. So they're looking at what they need for the future workforce, and this seems to be just as important. I wouldn't do this. We wouldn't do this if we did not engage the business community. And that's why, while we had everybody from the committee sign, we actually had all these groups sign on to this because they've been missing in action.
I agree. I think that business engagement is critical. So my last question is, I'm just curious. Does Massachusetts have a residency requirement for the teachers?
I don't know that. I don't know that. A residency requirement by state or by city and town?
Well, by city or by state.
Yeah, so I don't... I've not heard it come up, but I don't know that. So the only thing I do know is... No, I know. There's people that live in Rhode Island that teach in Massachusetts. That I know because we've run into some of them.
All right, so if there is a requirement, it could be by city.
Yeah, it could be. It could be.
Thank you. Thank you, Neil. Thank you so much for everything you do. Thanks.
Oh, well, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from council members? All right, so this session, I said, Councilwoman LaFortune?
Sorry, thank you. Neil, so one of the things that Massachusetts has is within their state constitution, they have the language that states that students have the right to an adequate education, which is not something that's within the Rhode Island state constitution. And so is your group, are you guys also trying to inform policy or push for some policy changes? I know that Senator Metz, I believe, had introduced a bill to change that, but it's been sitting in committee. So, I mean, if we had that language outlined in our constitution, that actually gives families a right to sue the state if their children is not receiving an adequate education. I think the word should be quality education. But is that something that your group also has been working with some of the state legislators or has been advocating for as well?
So two things. If you look in the Providence Journal today, you will see this specific topic with an op-ed by Tim Duffy from the School Committee Association. He's been the strong advocate for that. So it's a very topical thing. Have we done anything? No, but it is in here. If you look on page 15, investment priorities, suggested next steps, they advocate for modifications to existing clauses in the Rhode Island constitution to be put forth before voters in an effort to best protect and serve students. So we didn't write statute because that's not our job. But the topic itself, yes, is embedded in here. Doesn't mean it's going to get done, but it does mean we addressed it. And actually, Tim was the champion and he's raising it again.
Thank you. I was unclear when I read that, if that was a...
That's it. Yeah, that's code. Yeah, yeah. One of the toughest things of doing these reports is too many editors.
Yeah. All right. Any question? Any question from any council members? So, Neil, it's just in the same line of the question that Councilwoman Espinal had is like, how can we ensure the buy-in from the business community and that they're not going to walk away? Anything that we can do?
Yeah, show up and hit them over the head. So when was the last time? When was the last time that you presented to the Providence Chamber?
I haven't.
Okay. So there you go. So go to the Providence... I don't mean to be presumptuous, but the fact that the Providence Chamber has not invited you is their fault. But to go there, I had to... I presented this and I looked around the room and I thought they were all asleep, for goodness sakes. You know, it's a bunch of guys that look like me that still are in the Providence Chamber. Maybe a few women that look like me. But we've got to push. And I think it's pushing and showing up and advocating. But to use these groups, go to the chamber meeting, go to the Providence Foundation meeting and say, what are you doing, champion? What are you doing for our students? What are you doing for your workforce? And see what they say. I had to work like heck to get them to sign the thing, and that didn't cost them anything. So I think it's all of us putting the heat and the pressure on. You know, the Speaker, I often quote the Speaker, but he's very critical that the business community doesn't show up to testify for bills. Well, because they don't want to sit there for eight hours waiting to testify. But be that as it may, that's what they need to do. The business community needs to show up. And those are two vehicles that you have here, the Chamber and the Providence Foundation, where we got to keep hitting them over the head on this. And when it comes to supporting funding, because that's where the rubber hits the road. So I'll give you a quick, quick, quick story. Several years ago, when we, as a state, won the Race to the Top Grant, some of you may remember that. It was a $75 million grant. And I was co-chairing the steering committee. We had a business person there. And he had been in the business committee for a long time, somebody that was pretty well-known. And the first meeting he came to and he put on his business hat. And that was, these damn schools, they're not educating the kids well enough for me to hire them. Okay? Next meeting he came to. He said, oh, I talked to my sister-in-law and she's a teacher. And here's what she told me was wrong with the whole thing. Third meeting, he came and said, you know, my daughter's a sophomore in high school and she said all she's doing is taking tests. Three different views, same person. That's how complicated it is. We need to figure out these basics that we tried to outline here and stick with them. So if you want to go to those meetings, I'll walk in with you. But we got to keep pushing the business community because you're right on target with that.
I will go to those meetings. I'll let you know.
Okay.
All right. So any other council members? Council Mayor Steve Leader Ryan?
I would thank you very much, Council President. I would like to thank you very much, Neil, for your work on this. This is a great body of work and clearly what we have been missing for a long time. So it's exciting to see we have a well-thought-out course to follow. And I myself will be very supportive of promoting this effort. And I'll join you at those meetings.
Great.
But thank you for the hard work now and over the years. But thank you for hard work now and all over the years. Very much appreciate it.
Oh, thank you. It takes a lot of us to do it. And and any, you know, this doesn't have to end here. If you have questions, comments going forward, you know, certainly it's a tough road to hoe in Providence, even without a pandemic, trying to get these kids back to school. I mean, it's mind boggling. I talked to to Superintendent Peters the other day and just the the cost or potential cost. I mean, the hottest job in Rhode Island is going to be bus driver around the state. They're going to be all taking five kids each bus trip or something to do the the distancing. It's an incredibly complicated task that is in front of everybody. But thank you for your feedback. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Leader Ryan, your hand is still off. Are you all set or you have further questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
For recognizing my hand. I have taken it down.
I'm trying to keep tabs of everybody.
No, I appreciate it.
So this minute was scheduled for an hour. We have five minutes left. As Neil said, this this conversation can continue. The reason why we did it in this setting is to make sure that we had now in violation on any open meeting flow, we have the opportunity to have this discussion as a group. But please reach out to Neil with any follow ups. I know I'm going to be doing that for sure. So before we finish, I just want to thank Neil again for the hard work you're doing for prioritizing education. You have been pushing really hard. We really appreciate the work that you're doing. And I don't know if you want to say any final words before we close the meeting?
No, I just want to just say again, thank you for making it a topic. It's heartening when leaders in the community recognize this so that we're not, you know, shouting out in the woods there and that it took a lot of people. So including on our staff, Lisa, who heads our education sector is on the phone, as well as others on the committee and in the community. So this, nobody owns this. This only works if we go alone. So I appreciate you giving us the opportunity to to present this. Thank you.
Thank you. And and as you're doing this work, if you find that it's something else that that you want to have a conversation with all of us, please let us know because I would more than glad to set up another follow up meeting with everyone also.
So at the risk of ending on something that might aggravate people, I'm going to take the opportunity anyway.
Go ahead.
What's doing with the school buildings? So there was a big plan and supposedly money to fix up the schools. It was a big challenge because you can't take the teachers and the students out of the classroom. But for the last couple of months, we've taken the students and the teachers out of the classroom. Are the major improvements being made in the schools while the opportunity is there? I can't get a straight answer on that from anybody.
No, that's fair. I I don't have the answer, but I'm.
I'm not putting it on the plate. I'm just saying, yeah, I've asked.
We all, we all are going to follow up with and get the answer. Because that's, thank you for bringing that question. That's very important.
Without getting myself in trouble, I have asked the people who are supposed to be able to answer it, and I cannot get the answer. But it's a shame, given the fact those buildings have been empty and continue to be empty, that there is not more done in those. So.
I agree.
Stop on that one. I didn't mean to.
No, I agree with you. Thank you for bringing that that up. So with that, if any council member has any final, Leader Ryan?
Leader Ryan? Thank you. Thank you very much, Neil, for always asking the difficult questions. And as the council president has, I was anxious to see how council president was going to answer that, but we have been following it very closely and we have been asking. It is disappointing to see that we haven't made great progress. We have the money, we need to get the work done. So rest assured that the city council will be following up on that. But on, I just, I I'm very impressed with this body of work. And I'm wondering, can the council do anything to help make it more visible? Is this something that we could post on the council's website on or link perhaps to where it is, where it lives? Because.
We could provide the the link. The other thing, if you were so inclined, like I said, you know, we got the endorsement of the House, the Senate and the the Council on Elementary, Elementary and Secondary Education. It would be very beneficial and powerful if the council, and again, I'm just following up on the lead, felt comfortable in supporting this in some formal way. It would be great to have the municipal city, city council endorsing the work or or helping support it. So that would be a wonderful thing if you were so inclined and we could easily, we'll follow up on.
Council President, is that something that we could do as a body, endorse this body? Great. I will work on that.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
You for asking. Appreciate it.
Putting my hand down.
Hey, all right. Thank you. I just want to acknowledge Lisa DeMartino also from the Rhode Island Foundation. Thank you for the hard work you have been doing in the area of education and making this a reality. We really appreciate that.
Thank you.
And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Madam President.
Second.
Motion has been made on second to adjourn. Others in favor?
Hi.
We're adjourned. Thank you so much, Neil. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Be safe.
Good evening.
Be well.
Bye bye.